Good evening, everyone. Today is July 31st, 2023. This is a special meeting of the Salisbury City Council. Just in case of emergency, we ask everyone to please remain calm. You would go out this door, take a right, go down the hallway, take the stairs. That way it's blocked. You would go out, take a left, go all the way down to the stairs. Please do not use the elevator in case of emergency. At this time, we will stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will take a few moments for silent meditation and prayer. Thank you. One note on the agenda before we get started. At the end, it says adjournment to convening work session. That is incorrect. We will not be convening into a work session today. We would just be adjourning once we are done. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, all those in favor of approving the adoption of the special meeting agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Nichols, floor is yours.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the May 1st budget work session minutes, the May 8th council meeting minutes, the May 15th budget work sessions, special meeting and work session minutes, the May 22nd council meeting minutes, June 5th special meeting minutes number one and two, and the June 5th work session minutes, and the June 12th council meeting minutes.
Any questions or comments from the council?
None.
Hearing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Before we move any further, I'd like to take a moment and recognize that our County Executive, Julie Giordano, is sitting in the audience. Thank you for attending our meeting. Next up, we have some resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3266.
So moved.
Second.
Ooh. We'll give that one to Megan.
Good, Megan.
Ms. Kitzrow.
Sure. Good evening. Resolution Number 3266, a resolution of the City of Salisbury accepting a sponsorship of $150,000 from the Maryland Department of Commerce to operate the Maryland Folk Festival Traditions area within the 2023 Maryland Folk Festival. Whereas the Maryland State Art Council via the Maryland Department of Commerce wishes to provide a sponsorship of $150,000 to the City of Salisbury to operate the Maryland Folk Life Traditions area, and whereas Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury wish to accept $150,000 in sponsorship funding for the Maryland Department, from the Maryland Department of Commerce to operate the 2023 Maryland Folk Festival. And whereas as part of the 2023 Maryland Folk Festival, the city will spotlight the distinctive music, rituals, crafts, occupation, foodways, and other traditions at the heart of Maryland heritage. Yep, that's it.
Any questions or comments on this item?
No.
Thanks to the Commerce for coming in and sponsoring for this.
Yep.
Gladly accept $150,000?
Absolutely.
Okay. If so, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3266, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3267.
So moved.
Second.
Give me one second.
Ms. Kitzrow.
Yep. All right. Resolution Number 3267, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury making a declaration of official intent regarding the City of Salisbury's reasonable expectations to reimburse from the proceeds of a future borrowing project expenditures made in connection with the nine separate projects generally identified as apparatus replacement, rescue 16, Johnson Pond Dam improvements, restore, excuse me, restore Paleo Well Field wastewater treatment plant electric upgrades, park well field raw water main and valve replacement, Glen Avenue lift station wastewater treatment plan outfall inspections and repairs, and South Side Pump Station force main. Whereas the City of Salisbury Municipal Corporation of the State of Maryland is in the process of undertaking nine separate projects generally identified as apparatus replacement, rescue 16, Johnson Pond Dam improvements, restore Park Well Field, restore Paleo Well Field wastewater treatment plant electric upgrades, park well field raw water main and valve replacement, Glen Avenue lift station wastewater treatment plan outfall and inspections and repairs, and South Side Pump Station force main. And whereas the city anticipates to borrow money for cost of the project, such borrowing to be evidenced by one or more series of general obligation bonds or evidence in the debt to be issued by the city. And whereas the city reasonably expects to spend city funds on cost of the projects prior to issuance of the bonds or any interim finance incurred in the city in anticipation of the bonds, and to reimburse the city from proceeds of the bonds for all or portion of such previously paid costs of the projects, and to use proceeds of the bonds, excuse me, bonds to finance all or portion of any interim borrowing incurred by the city to apply to reimbursements, the city for prior expenditures relating to the projects. And whereas Section 1.150-2 of the U.S. Treasury Regulations provides that local government funding original expenditures intended to be reimbursed from the proceeds of obligations must take a declaration, excuse me, just lost my spot, declaration of official intent in order to qualify for such original expenditures for reimbursement from a reimbursement bond, all within the meaning of the reimbursement regulations. And whereas the city is an issuer for purposes of reimbursement regulations, and the Council of the city wishes to adopt this resolution for the purpose of evidence clear and official intent of the city to reimburse for reimbursement bond proceeds, original expenditures made in connection with the project, Section 1, now therefore be resolved by the City of Council of the City of Salisbury and Maryland that the recitals to this resolution are deemed a substantive part of the resolution are incorporated by reference herein and capitalized terms defined in the recitals to this resolution and not otherwise defined herein, will have the meanings given to such terms in the recitals heretofore. And the names be, the names used for the projects in this resolution are the names by which the projects are generally identified in the applicable budget material of the city for the fiscal year expended beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 3rd, 2024. And it's hereby expressly recognized that expenditures from the projects and or issuance of the any bonds or interim financing occurred in this resolution to any such project shall be deemed to, one, be to such project as it to be referred to by similar but not the exact same name, the applicable city budgetary materials, including any capital plans and included in any changes in the scope of activities. Such project and are the name such project made by the city in accordance with applicable law, including any future fiscal years references in this resolution to cost of the projects shall be deemed to be expenditures that constitute capital expenditures and to the extent applicable cost of issuance of any bonds relating to any of the projects and capitalized interests. Section 2, and be further resolved that in accordance with reimbursement regulations, the city hereby makes this declaration of its reasonable expectations to expend money on the cost of the projects prior to the issuance of the bonds and to use proceeds of the bonds, which bonds and interim financing will qualify as a reimbursement bond for purposes of reimbursement regulations to reimburse all or portions of such original expenditures made with respect to the project. This resolution intended to be a declaration of official intent with the meaning of the reimbursement regulations, Section 3, and be it further resolved that the maximum principal amount of the bonds to be issued for each project is identified on Schedule A and attached heretofore incorporated by reference herein in Section 4, and to be it further resolved that the provisions of this resolution be, shall be liberally construed to be ordered to effect through the purpose of this resolution. Finally, Section 5, and to be further resolved that this resolution shall become effective upon adoption by the Council and approved by the acting mayor pursuant to Charter, Section SC 7-46A, this resolution may not be petitioned to referendum. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Like some much-needed projects, specifically.
Right.
New rescue truck. All right. Hearing no questions or comments, call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3267, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. Next series of ordinances, so we'll move to motion to, entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2811 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Let's go, Sharon.
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance Number 2815.
Oh, 2811.
2811. Did I skip on? I did. My fault. Ordinance Number 2811, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 forfeited funds fund budget to appropriate funds to purchase a customizable and expandable storage system for the Salisbury Police Department. As you mentioned, Council President, this is before you for second reading. There's been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
None.
Hearing none, call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2811 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2812 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2812, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 2.16 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Fire Department for granting the authority to enforce all laws and ordinances of the City of Salisbury and the State of Maryland pertaining to fire, to implement fire safety programs, and to issue permits and licenses to the city fire marshal. This is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
No.
Hearing, call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2812 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2813 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2813, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 8.11 of the Salisbury City Code entitled the Fire Prevention Code, granting the authority to issue permits for the installation, modification, or removal from service of any private fire service, water mains, and their appliances, and prescribing penalties for specific violations. Again, this is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments on this ordinance?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2813 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2815 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Neither one.
Ms. Jackson and Ms. Alton, I think, on that one.
Ordinance Number 2815, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving the mayor to defund the computer-aided dispatch project and to appropriate funds for the purchase of portable radios. Whereas the City of Salisbury appropriated $1,105,000 in the general capital fund budget by ordinance Number 27211 for the computer-aided dispatch center project with funding from $805,000 in bond proceeds to be issued in FY 24 and $300,000 from FY 23 Pago. And whereas the city has determined the above funds are no longer necessary for the computer-aided dispatch project, and whereas ordinance Number 2808 previously allocated $30,000 of the above referenced FY 23 Pago to the comprehensive plan project and $85,000 for the zoning code project. Whereas the city desires to return by transfer the remaining $185,000 in unused Pago and the capital projects fund for the computer-aided dispatch project to the general fund. And whereas the city desires to cancel the previous appropriation of $805,000 for the computer-aided dispatch project to be funded from FY 24 bond proceeds. And whereas the city desires to increase the appropriation for equipment in the general fund by $145,000 in order to purchase portable radios for the fire department. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the appropriation of $145,000 as provided here and above must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Section 1 of ordinance Number 2815 reads, Acting Mayor John R. Heath, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the portable radios in the amount of $145,000. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's general capital project fund budget being hereby is amended as follows. Increase revenue for project description computer-aided dispatch, account description bond proceeds, account 9802446931243034 by $805,000. Decrease revenue for computer-aided dispatch Pago, account number 98024-46931343034 by $185,000. Decrease expense for computer-aided dispatch construction, account number 9812451302643034 by $185,000. And decrease expense for computer-aided dispatch equipment, 98124577030-43034 by $805,000. Section 3, the City of Salisbury's FY general fund budget being hereby is amended as follows. Increase, I'm sorry, decrease expense for project description none, account description transfer general cap projects, account number 91001-599109 by $185,000. Increase expense for project description none for equipment, account number 24035-577030 by $145,000. And decrease revenue for use of surplus, which is account number 01000-469811 by the amount of $40,000. I did note as read in the Section 2, I think there's a typo. It says 805.000. We will fix that before, on second reading, to reflect that it's 805,000.
Any other questions or comments on this? All right. I know. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving, approving ordinance Number 2816 for first reading, please signify by saying, I'm sorry, ordinance Number 2815 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2816 for first reading.
So moved.
Ordinance Number 2816, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development referred to as DHCD for the purpose of accepting funds from the Digital Inclusion Grant in the amount of $18,400 for the Ann Street Village Resident Technology Education Project. Whereas the Department of Housing and Community Development funds a grant to help municipalities provide technology and computer literacy training to underserved communities. And whereas the City of Salisbury Information Services Department, seeing a need for training on computer and technology devices and internet literacy for residents at the Ann Street Village location, applied for the said digital inclusion grant, and DHCD has awarded grant funds to the Information Services Department of the city in the amount of $18,400. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with DHCD attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 defining how the $18,400 in grant monies must be expended. And whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated, authorized by the Council of the city. And whereas the, whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits of the Council of the city. Section 1 of ordinance 2816 reads as follows. Acting Mayor Jack R. Heath is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is attached as Exhibit 1, on behalf of the city, for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $18,400. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget being hereby is amended as follows. A, increase DHCD revenue account number 10500-423601-XXXX by $18,400. And B, increase training account number 10500-555504-XXXX by that same amount, which is $18,400.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
The only comment is this grant. Yeah. I love to see workforce development trainings coming back up here. This is exciting. And, you know, it's giving everyone at that program a leg up to get back into the workforce. So I'm excited to see it.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2816 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Take a breath. Take a sip of water. Because what we're here now is, this is the one. Okay? So everybody, if you need some water, take a breath too with her, please do. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2817 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2817, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the Salisbury City Code to add Chapter 2.25 entitled Labor Code in furtherance of Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-4, which authorized collective bargaining for certain employees of the city. Whereas by Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-4, mayor and council publicly declared there exists a need for harmony and cooperation between a public employer and its employees, and recognized the benefit of allowing certain employees to organize and bargain collectively. And whereas the City of Salisbury amended its charter to add Article 23 to grant certain employees the right to organize and bargain collectively through representative employee organizations of their own choosing, and to submit to binding arbitration certain labor disputes that may arise during negotiations, as subsequently defined and established by the city's labor code, which was to be passed by ordinance of mayor and council. And whereas mayor and council will hereby adopt this labor code, which is to be codified in Chapter 2.25 of the code, to define and establish, inter alia, the scope and subjects of bargaining, including negotiable and non-negotiable items or both, the rights of the employer and the employee, the units appropriate and inappropriate for collective bargaining, unfair labor practices, permissible and impermissible union activities, and the scope and method of binding arbitration and the certain disputes to be submitted to binding arbitration. And whereas the City of Salisbury recognized the needs to protect the public by ensuring uninterrupted, effective, and orderly service, and consequently, this labor code shall prohibit strikes or work stoppages for all employees. Section 1 of ordinance Number 2817 is going to amend the code by adding a whole new chapter called Chapter 2.25 as set forth below. And this is a product of numerous work sessions that we've had amongst, you know, the city officials and the potential bargaining units. What I would like to do, since this has been already the subject of numerous work sessions and been posted as the, on the agenda for this meeting, I'm going to highlight each of the chapters and just kind of summarize what they do rather than reading it verbatim. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. Chapter 2.25001 governs title and legislative findings. We are going to refer to this chapter as the Labor Code. And the legislative findings, it is the public policy of the city and the purpose of the Labor Code to promote a fair, harmonious, peaceful, and cooperative relationship between the management of the city and those employees of the city who are governed by the Labor Code, and to ensure that the public health, welfare, and safety of the citizens will be maintained at all times. Chapter 2.25020 is the definition section, and I am going to highlight some of the important definitions for you that were some of the topics of discussion. Subsection C defines confidential employee. A confidential employee means an employee who has access to confidential information, including budgetary and fiscal data, subject to use by the city administration and collective bargaining, or works in a close and continuing confidential relationship assisting and aiding the city administration. Likewise, subsection J governs management employee. A management employee means an employee who has had significant role in the preparation and administration of budgets for the city department, and may reasonably be required to assist directly in the preparation for and conduct of collective bargaining negotiations on behalf of the city administration, or have a significant role in the administration of collective bargaining agreements. This includes having the authority to exercise independent judgment and the interest of the employer to hire, transfer, suspend, lay off, recall, promote, discharge, or discipline other employees, or having the responsibility to adjust their grievance or effectively to recommend such action. It is not a routine or clerical nature but requires the use of independent judgment. And so for the purposes of this labor code, an employee holding the rank of captain or below within the fire department and a rank of lieutenant or below within the police department is not considered a management employee. Chapter, or subsection 2.25030 governs the duties of the Director of Human Resources, and in short, the Director of Human Resources shall be charged with the administration of the Labor Code. Chapter or subsection 2.25040 discusses management and confidential employees, and they are excluded from collective bargaining. So all management and confidential employee, employees are excluded from participation and a representation unit, and thus prohibited from engagement and collective bargaining. Subsection 2.25050 governs representation units. In short, employees who are not confidential or management employees shall constitute the following separate representation units. There will be three: fire, police, or general government. Subsection 2.25060 governs employee rights. Employees shall have the right to self-organization, to form, join, or assist employee organizations, and to bargain collectively through representatives of their own choosing, as provided in the article of our code, our charter, that is Article 23, and also this particular Labor Code. Employees shall also have the right to refrain from any or all such activities. Conversely, subsection 2.25070 governs employer rights. And so the employer still maintains the following rights: to determine the budget of the city, including all financial obligations and expenditures, and to exercise taxing authority to determine the ways and means to allocate funds to various departments and projects, to exercise control and discretion over its organization and operations, to determine how and when to deploy its personnel, to establish, suspend, relocate, or discontinue operations, facilities, stations, or services, and to reduce personnel, to determine the way personnel will be used to ensure public safety, to adopt reasonable rules and regulations and general orders pertaining to the city's purpose, operation techniques, efficiency, and management, which are not inconsistent with the terms of any collective bargaining agreement, to determine staffing, including but not limited to the use of full and part-time employees and the number of such employees, to suspend, demote, discharge, or take disciplinary action against employees for just cause, and in the case of sworn police officers, to do subject to the provisions of the Maryland Police Accountability Act, and to discharge employees at reasonable ease to be involved in a strike, and in the case of sworn police officers, to do so within the provisions of the Maryland Police Accountability Act. The next subsection, 2.25080 governs collective bargaining, and I will refer your attention to subsection D, which was another hot topic, that is the subjects of bargaining. Here we have the employer and the exclusive representative may bargain collectively and reach an agreement on the following subjects of bargaining. One, wages, two, hours, and three, other terms and conditions of employment, but excluding health insurance benefits. The duration of any collective bargaining agreement reads as follows. The employer shall not enter into or be bound by any collective bargaining agreement that is in effect for less than two years or longer than three years. Subsection 2.25090 governs representation, and it sets forth the procedure for recognizing an employee organization, whether through a certification election or a voluntary recognition. And we anticipate that we will be recognizing ours through voluntary recognition. Subsection 2.250, I'm sorry, subsection 2.25100 unfair labor practices. It shall be an unfair labor practice for the employer to engage in any of the It shall be an unfair labor practice for the employer to engage in any of the following conduct: to interfere with, restrain, or coerce employees in the exercise of their rights granted under this Labor Code, to discourage or encourage memberships in any employee organization, to fail or refuse to negotiate in good faith when exclusive representative, to retaliate against an employee because of that employee's exercise of rights guaranteed under this Labor Code, or to control or dominate an employee organization or contribute financial or other support to it. For an employee organization, it shall be an unfair labor practice for an employee organization by and through its officers, agents, and representatives to engage in the following conduct: one, to interfere with, restrain, or coerce employees in the exercise of their rights guaranteed under this Labor Code, induce the employer or its representatives to commit any unfair labor practice, directly or indirectly cause, instigate, encourage, condone, initiate, sponsor, support, direct, or engage in any strike, fail or refuse to negotiate in good faith with the employer or to retaliate against an employee because of that employee's exercise of rights guaranteed under the Labor Code. Subsection two point two five one ten governs dues, checks off. So section A says that when an employee organization has been certified as the exclusive representative of the employees in the bargaining unit, it shall be the only employee organization eligible to obtain an agreement from the employer to deduct dues or service fees of the employee organization from the pay of those employees in the unit who provide a written, signed, and dated authorization, and to remit said dues to the employee organization without cost. And all organizations shall be in effect for one year and shall be automatically renewable from year to year unless written notice of termination by the employee is received by the department, or director, excuse me, of human resources. And an employee may terminate an authorization at any time by giving thirty days written notice to the director of human resources. There is no compulsory union, union membership. No agreement between the employer and the employee organization shall compel any employee to become and remain a member of the employee organization or to pay dues. Subsection two point two five one twenty governs permissible union activities. Solicitation of members and dues may be conducted during work hours, provided it is not disruptive to work. Employer requested and approved consultations and meetings between the employer and representatives of the exclusive representative shall, whenever practical be conducted on official time. And negotiations between the employer and the representatives of the exclusive barg- exclusive representative for the purpose of negotiating a collective bargaining agreement shall be conducted during work hours. Subsection two point two five one hundred and thirty governs work actions prohibited. And general strikes, work stoppages, and lockouts are prohibited. Subsection two point two five one forty governs the timeline of collective bargaining and defines what an impasse is for the timeline. Regardless of the date upon what certi- of what certification is issued to the employee organization, negotiations shall be held between October one and January fifteen. Any collective bargaining agreement reached as resolved, any such negotiations shall be presented to city council for ratification no later than April fifteenth, and if ratified by council, shall become effective July one. Impasse procedure: if no understanding has been reached between the employer and the exclusive representative by January fifteenth, it shall be deemed that an impasse has been reached, at which time the matters in dispute may be submitted to arbitration, and the parties shall follow the arbitration procedures set forth in this chapter. Subsection two point two five one fifty governs the arbitration. Subsection A governs matters subject to arbitration. The employer, exclusive representative, or an employee may submit to arbitration any alleged unfair labor practice dispute regarding the application or interpretation of a collective bargaining agreement or an impasse. Subsection B governs matters that are not subject to arbitration. No grievance as defined by the city employee handbook shall be submitted to arbitration. Rather, all grievances shall follow the procedures set forth in the city's employee handbook, although an employee within a representation unit may elect to have representation from his or her exclusive representative at all steps in the grievance process. It goes on to govern how the arbitration is selected, the powers and duties of the arbitrator, the hearings. The hearings will be held here in Salisbury, Maryland, unless otherwise agreed by the parties, and that the arbitrator shall designate a time and place for the hearing and notify the parties not le- less than twenty days before the hearing. There is a time limit for the arbitration. Unless otherwise agreed by the parties, each party has up to eight hours to present its, his, or her case to the arbitrator, so that the arbitration shall conclude within two days. Subsection J outlines the considerations of pertinent factors by the arbitrator. And then lastly, the last subsection of the Labor Code, which is two point two five one sixty, is a review of the collective bargaining agreement. The city council shall vote on the ratification of any collective bargaining agreement. And prior to voting on the ratification of any collective bargaining agreement, the director of finance shall submit to the city council a fiscal impact note addressing, at a minimum, the annual cost of the contract to the city, the increase or decrease in costs compared to the current or preceding contract, and how the costs of the agreement are to be funded.
It's done.
Yes.
Well done.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Longtime company.
And I'm kind of glad that it's done, and I hope everyone is satisfied.
I do have one question. So on the ratification of the bargaining agreement, will that be done by ordinance? Or will that be done by resolution?
Good question. I believe that can be done by resolution, but let me just confirm on that one.
Thank you. All right, hearing no other questions or comments, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number two eight one seven for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, we will open up for public comments, even though it's not on the agenda. We are doing public comments this evening. So if you wish to make a public comment, we ask that you fill a form out and hand it to our city clerk. I will start with comments. Andy, if you have any online, please let me know.
Just ask right now, I'll let you know if I get any responses.
I'll start with the first one we received, John Robinson. Floor is yours.
Good evening, and let me first start by, because everybody wants to yell at the council people all the time. Let me first start by saying thank you for what you do. I'm not sitting there. A lot of people out here aren't sitting there and don't have the guts to run for office, so I appreciate what you do. Even when I completely disagree with you, I do appreciate what you do. And I think that people need to be more aware of how hard your position truly is. So thank you for that. And I also have another thank you. Having lost my business seven years ago to a fire and being wiped out financially and not even knowing if I've ever come back, we moved into the city limits. And the city was an absolute pleasure to do business with. You guys helped us where we needed to be helped, where we had to save money with doing blueprints. And you pointed us in the right direction. Your department heads and your inspectors were incredible. They were strict, and I appreciated that. They were very firm-handed sometimes, which is great. But I thank you very much for what they do. And I don't think, I think a lot of people think being in business in Salisbury is hard. It's not. You guys were awesome to do business with, so thank you for that. So having said that, let me bring up, we're now thirty days into the paper bag ordinance. I hate plastic bags. We've never used really plastic bags in our store. We use paper bags. But I hate the idea that we have to charge somebody for it. I don't know if it's constitutional. I don't like the idea of charging. It's causing arguments. I literally have had people say to me, "I'll never come back." So we are not charging for bags. You want to come give me a five hundred dollar fine? We'll settle it in court. I don't want to do that, guys. I would love the ordinance to be changed to, "We strongly encourage you to charge ten cents for that paper bag." Every business should be strongly encouraged by the city of Salisbury. We provide paper bags, these nineteen seventy-two gift bags in this city for free. I think we can afford to keep doing that. So I really hope you guys could maybe take a look at that. It's causing a lot of issues. I've seen people throw food at people at Arby's because of it, and cuss at the people at McDonald's. It is causing, it's on the employees, not on people like me that are in the back room. It's causing a lot of issues. So if you could address that, that'd be a great way to do it. So one thing I didn't put there real quick, and I want to address this, something personally that happened to me. There's a lot of kids riding around on motorcycles in town and bicycles, not bicycles, but four-wheelers. I was run off the road by, by them. I hit the curb at Main Street, doing almost fifteen hundred dollars damage to my truck. I tried to call the city police. You can't call five four eight three one six five anymore, which I did not know. And it was a big issue for me, because they pulled guns on me on Main Street and Route thirteen. And had I not have been a more level-headed person, we probably would have had a major incident. We must address this in the city of Salisbury. These guys are riding around, and it's not just me. I've talked to a lieutenant who came and apologized to me. And it has to be addressed. It's time for the county council and the city council to sit down and figure out something to be done about this. I even know where they live. I followed them home. I mean, I broke the wheel of my car. I went home, changed vehicles, went out, and I was able to follow them home. Nothing is being done about it. We must address it. It has to be addressed. I don't want to, I don't want to have to take the law into my own hands to address something that's happening to all these people in Salisbury. And it's not just me. Young man that's just got his car in Fruitland, sixteen, sixteen-year-old totaled his car trying to avoid this. And three of these kids have been killed in Wyomiko County on these motorcycles in our streets, and we're not talking about it. In Baltimore City, there's now a law, and now there's a lawsuit against the Baltimore City Police Department because they're not enforcing it by a lady whose son was killed on a four-wheeler. And she says it's the police's department's fault because they're not enforcing it. And now her son was killed because the police aren't doing their job by pulling her kid over. I know, catch twenty-two. So that's, you know, it just has to be addressed. And then the only other thing I have, and guys, I love this city. I mean, with all my heart. I don't think people understand how much I love Salisbury. I was homeless as a kid in this city. My store is now where we used to live in our car. My store is now there where we live in our car. And we own a multimillion-dollar business in this city. And it's incredible to think that. And, and we've rebuilt it twice. I mean, it's not like it's easy being in business. But I live down Riverside Drive. I'm moving downtown in the next couple of months. But what we need to do too is, we've got to figure out some sort of maintenance in the city. The same seven streetlights have been out on Riverside Drive for over a year. I know you have the citizen reporter. It doesn't work. We've got enough city employees that I think we can send some of them out at night to look at the lights in Salisbury and write down the numbers of the lights. I'm pretty sure the city pays for those. Over half the lights on Route fifty are out, half. I mean, we talk about crime. Let's light up the city back. And we're paying for it. I believe we pay, pay for it already. I'd be, you know, it's fourteen dollars a month or whatever the city has worked out. So, but I can't even ride my bike to work anymore. We put bike lanes in. There's no maintenance. The same piece of trash has been sitting on Riverside Drive carpet for almost four weeks. I mean, it's ridiculous. And you go to Fitzwater Street, and it's a mess. That wouldn't be allowed in other neighborhoods. That is ridiculous. It's an absolute disaster. I mean, I don't know who, what, how we're doing these things. And it's okay if we make mistakes. It's okay if we screwed up and put curbs in where they shouldn't be. Let's get rid of them if they need to be gotten rid of. Let us ride our bikes into the city. They had a big bike fest a few weeks ago where everybody rode their bikes around. They couldn't even ride in the bike lanes for that. How embarrassing is that for the city of Salisbury? That they couldn't even ride in the bike lanes that we're providing and paying for? They're, they're filled with trash. You can't even ride on Northwood Drive because the trees are overhanging the street by ten feet. I mean, it's ridiculous, guys. And I know there's a lot to go on in Salisbury, and bike lanes and trash and all that isn't the top of it. But I appreciate what you guys do. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to drive around the city and realize we need to do some things different. I know we have a new administration, basically, and I, I'm looking forward to things changing a little bit around here. And it's okay if we didn't do something right. Look, I screw up all the time. I admit my faults. I'm, I'm a man with major faults. Ask my wife, she'll tell you. I'm telling you, I've got plenty of them. But it's okay if we screwed up. And I know it's my time's up. But thank you, guys, for what you do, even when I disagree. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, I did, John, my apologies, because I failed to mention, we do have a four limit, four-minute time limit. And typically, I hit with thirty seconds left, but I forgot to start my timer. But I will do it on our next guy. Sorry. Next up is Jeff Dean.
Thank you, Jeff Dean. I live on Middle Boulevard. I was here last meeting to discuss an emerging issue in our neighborhood with recovery homes owned by Homes for Hope, I believe it's called. So I wanted to update. We've had some information, we've had some conversations. And I would like to draw the city's attention to possible issues that you may not be aware of. I hope you're not aware of them, because if they're unaddressed intentionally, that's concerning. The, from what we can gather, this organization has a home in Newtown with eighteen men in one home. I've been told by a source that I trust enough to say it here that they are earning one thousand dollars per week, per person, for that home. That's eighteen thousand dollars a week. And in the homes in our neighborhood, they're charging one hundred and sixty dollars per person per week. We're not entirely sure how many people are living in these homes, but between eight and ten, it sounds like. Maybe possibly eleven or twelve. I understand there's supposed to be some kind of limit on how many cars are parked at one of these homes. That is not happening at the three, I think it's three thirteen, Middle. They have six to eight cars. They've got guests coming in and out. The supervision seems kind of spotty. My concerns for my neighborhood are not, over the last two weeks, I've been digging in pretty hard on this. And my concerns actually have shifted. And I realized that if, if that number is true, if it's half that, if it's half of eighteen thousand dollars a week, without regulation, the, the most vulnerable people in our community, which are recovering addicts, the most vulnerable people are extremely at risk for exploitation here. And so the proprietor of this business openly lied to us on several topics. Doesn't really matter, but her credibility with me is very low right now. I will admit that, in my experience, the neighbors have been quiet. I will say quiet. But I've also heard that the immediate neighbors to these two houses are not feeling that way. The proprietor told us that there would be certain rules and regulations and like ways of being that are not happening. She did not disclose the financials, even though I asked. I found those out through a third party. She said she had received all of her inspections before moving the men in. I discovered last time at this meeting that was not true, that she had not had her occupancy inspections yet before moving the men in. I asked if she had had her fire marshal's inspection. She said she, first she said she didn't need one, I think, sort of, kind of. And then when I pressed on that, she said that she had had it. And then the next day, they were seen hustling in a bunch of fire extinguishers into the house at two, two twenty-three, Middle. They've converted a basement, and to my knowledge, have people living in it, and were pumping water out of it after the storm. And so they have converted a four-bedroom home into at least a five-bedroom with a converted basement, and are trying to put two people every seventy-five square feet for a lot of money. And by her own declaration, said that there's nothing keeping her, from a regulatory standpoint, from buying every house on our street and doing this to every house on our street. Without regulating this, if you can put two people for every seventy-five square feet, occupiable square, occupiable square feet in a home, and that's a negotiation between the city and the developer of that thing, because she's going to argue for ten to twelve people in this home, she said, then what feels to me is going to happen, because she, because I asked her about sprinklers, and she said, "We don't need sprinklers. It's historic district." So if we have a situation where we have a hospital, suboxone clinics, treatment facilities, and so on, and within walking distance, which is what the recovery houses are looking for. They're looking for that donut where we can walk to the services. And they coincide with historic district where they can be regulated out of sprinklers and safety systems. We're asking for an enormous disaster. We're asking for an enormous disaster. I'm saying it in public now, because eighteen thousand dollars a week is serious money. And they are going, they're not going to be scared off by a bunch of angry citizens. But I'm asking the city to look at this and regulate it, because it's only going to get more. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up, we have Caitlin Lacone.
Hi, I'm Caitlin. I also live on Middle Boulevard. And if you notice, my children were a lot more quiet in the room at the meeting because they had direction, sir. Thank you. But I am also here to address the Homes for Hope Recovery because they are my neighbors. We share a backyard. There's no privacy fence between my backyard where my children are and the nine men that are wearing ankle bracelets on their ankles. The lady says that she does the honesty policy for their criminal background. She can't promise that none of them are sex offenders. She can't tell me if they're still on drugs or not on drugs. She says that there's going to be a rotation of the household. It's not her responsibility to get to know neighbors. And so now our street is bookend. There's sixteen kids that live on the street. We're point nine miles from the There's sixteen kids that live on the street or point nine miles from the elementary school, point five from S U. The new bike lane goes right by Waverly, which interestingly enough is on the hospital side, not on the correct side of the road also. But these men that live in the house that are, I was in the Army, and I know it's not good to be in a small area with other adults if you're there by force. It's only a matter of time before someone gets upset. There was no notification to anyone in the neighborhood about this, which doesn't even make sense for the goal of what this lady, Trish Otte, is trying to do. I also feel like it's not safe for our children. It's not safe for the residents in this household because right now, quite frankly, it's like you come into our neighborhood, don't tell us what's going on, all of a sudden, I'm having to tell my kids to stop going in a loop around our house in our backyard because I don't know. That's my job as a mother. And so, they are essentially an enemy because it's foreign, because I don't know. And so, I feel like if the goal is actually to help these people, there has to be regulation. The city can do something and should do something. There shouldn't be nine adult men in one house, like by your regulation. I called all of you, whoever you are, I just looked your names up. No one has gotten back to me except for Megan Outen. Thank you. I also contacted the mayor three times, and are you the mayor? I don't even know. I haven't heard back from you. I contacted the police. They didn't know. I will say that they have been proactive in helping me get a Neighborhood Watch, so that I feel like is what I'm trying to do. But I asked her, because she sarcastically asked me what would make me feel more safe. I suggested putting a privacy fence. She said she can't do that because she doesn't want to get a permit, probably because she didn't want you guys to know what she's doing. But she totally will do this again on the street because she's proven it now twice. There's no way we can sell our house unless we don't tell them, which was her suggestion, just don't tell anyone that there's drug addicts on your street. I'm not trying to say that they're bad people. I want them to get help. I do. I just don't want it around my kids, and I have the right to say that. I have a right to demand that the city does something because we chose Salisbury City because we believed in it. We chose to move to a street where people had been there for thirty-plus years. We chose. When talking to Tish at my house, she said, "Do you not know where you live?" So, I just want to let you guys know that that's what people think of Salisbury City. "Do you not know where you live? I can put a drug rehab halfway house wherever I want. I can make eighteen thousand dollars a week wherever I want." And guess what? She lives in Berlin. And guess what? Berlin stopped that from happening. So, I would ask that we stop this from happening because it's despicable, and it's not putting children first, and it's not putting my child first. And things like you said, sir, about asking me to leave the room when my kids were quiet is unacceptable, especially when my son has autism. He's got to learn. He's got to try. I'm a mom. Moms have it hard enough. I'm here to try to protect them. I'm here to try to stand and do what's right by going to the city first. That is not appropriate, and do not ever ask another mother to leave the room again.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments? Sure. We do have just one online, so after.
After Ms. Gibson.
Kaye Gibson, I live on Isabella Street. I'm eighty years old. I live by myself. A lot of our neighbors are our age. I've had a couple of break-ins. I'm pretty vulnerable. I really can't defend myself against an adult male. I have concerns, even though I don't have children, that there are so many elderly living in Newtown that you are putting it at risk if you have an unregulated drug rehab house. It calls for a lot of regulations. It calls for a lot of supervision. It calls for a lot of background, making sure that the people that live around you are safe. It's really up to the city, even though the American With Disabilities Act is in force. We're also, the elderly are also a vulnerable population that you have an obligation to. Would you please check these folks out? Would you please make sure they're properly licensed? Would you make sure they're properly inspected, that the housing is safe, and that the neighborhood is safe? Thank you.
What you got, Andy?
Ryan, it's your turn if you're available.
So, my name is Lee Matkin, and I'm a Boy Scout, and I have a question about inflation and what you are doing to help it and how young people can help.
Thank you, Ryan. Typically during public comments, we don't answer questions, but if during the administration comment, if Mr. Kitzru wants to answer that question, we'll toss that to him.
Sure, solve inflation. You got it. Ryan, nice, thank you for the question. If I can, if you want to throw your contact information in the chat, I'd love to just reach back out to you and your father, and we can talk about some interesting strategies. We always love to have youth help us solve problems, so thank you for wanting to step up and do such things as that. Just a couple of quick comments. I don't typically address people within public comment, but just so people are aware of what is on the agenda next week, we are excited to, we will be talking about paper bag ban. We have gone through a first month of trial and error to see what works, and one of the big hot topics is regarding the fee for the bags. So, that's one of the topics within that legislation that will be coming up for discussion at work session next week. Also, a topic will be on recovery residences. We are talking about that, and I'll be presenting some information to council regarding what is opportunities for regulation, certifications, et cetera. On a personal note, the recovery house in Newtown I've lived across for since its inception. I have a seven- and four-year-old who have grown up across that street, and I have never felt safer. They are perfect neighbors. And I would say we had an amazing River Fest this past weekend. I was really excited. It was hot, but it was successful, and we're looking forward to more upcoming events. So, I will pass it over to Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Couple of things tonight. I want to recognize and thank Bill Garrett for his work on the grant for the technology. You know, we started talking about Ann Street Village in the very beginning and saying it was transitional housing with wraparound services. This is a prime example, and it hasn't caused the city assent. So, Bill, thank you very much for doing that. Next, tomorrow night, for anybody who doesn't know, is National Night Out. We hope that everybody can come. It's five to eight P M. It's gotten better every year, and we look forward to another great evening. Next up, the children are still out there. They're still in summer moog, and they're probably getting a little antsy because they know in a few weeks, they're going to be doing school prep. So, keep your minds on what you're doing when you're driving because we don't want any incidents, and we've managed to get through, I won't say that, we'll put the whammy on it, but we want to keep them safe. Next, as always, I'm going to do the peg for blood. We haven't come out of this, and it doesn't look like we're going to come out of it anytime soon. There is a real shortage for blood, and if you're able, please give blood. And lastly, I'd like to thank Andy. I've been on vacation for a while, and I will tell you, this guy has kept the city running and deserves to be recognized. He's wearing two hats at the same time, even though I'm calling and checking in every day, it's not the same. It's not the same as being here. So, thank you, Andy, for the work you've done. You should be recognized for that. With that, everybody have a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with Mrs. Gregory.
Got me. Don't have much to add other than just please be mindful of kids that are playing. I know in my own neighborhood, there are kids who are outside enjoying the weather, hopefully staying hydrated, although I know how hard that is, being a mom myself, trying to stay cool, but, you know, just be mindful. I know folks like to race down my street, but there are kids that are playing right there on the curb, so please, please, please be mindful of that. Other than that, I'm just glad that the weather has seemed to break, but I don't want to jinx that too, so just enjoying the cooler weather. Thanks.
Ms. Jackson.
Last night, I was at the prayer visual and walk on Church Street. I went to the other one maybe two weeks prior. We're making some headway, and I am so proud of the Metro Alliance, Watchmen One Voice, and the entire community, and our local elected officials, our state officials that have been present, our county officials who have been present, our acting chief back there who I've seen both times, mine shine. I just want to see us do more work. And I told them yesterday, I said, "If I could do anything, it would be for these kids. We need to spare their lives. We are the people that they look up to. We are the people that they come to." So, we have to be proactive, and we have to work. So, what we're doing now is working, but we have to be more proactive, doing things in the community, not just walking. Walking's fine. Praying is fine, but we need to do things for these kids. Get some kind of activities for our children to do during the day, during the evening. We need to open up our doors, these community centers, anywhere that can be open. We need to allow some of these businesses that have buildings that can be used to let organizations use these buildings to access activities for these children. I know it costs to rent buildings and all of that, but for some, for these children, some of these children never get to do anything. So, they always say, "I don't mind, it's a devil's workshop." I'm not making excuses for kids. I will never make excuses for kids because just as I'll hold my feet to the fire, I will hold their feet to the fire. Kids, some children actually know what they're doing when they do it, but we, as adults, we have to be a little bit more responsible when talking to our kids. It's not what you say is how you say it. Kids want to be loved, so if you come be angry with them, they're going to rebel. I talk to kids every day, all day, and there are some who get smart, but I just brush it off and keep going, and I'll tell them, "Don't disrespect me. Don't dis, I'm old enough to be your grandmother, your great-grandmother." It's not, we just have to be more, like I said, proactive, do what we need to do with our kids, and these are our kids. These are not just my kids. They're just not Mira's kids. They're just not Michelle's kids. They are everybody's kids, and what they do in our city makes an impression on our city, and it doesn't make a good impression on our city. So, we need to start working and moving things forward. Now, we do have an event coming this weekend. It's at the VFW one oh one five nine. It's an indoor-outdoor activity, which is free for the community. We'll have information booths. We'll have food. We'll have several different things there for the kids to do and even for the adults to do, and we're just looking forward to you coming. It's being held, it's called Unity Day, Day in the Streets. The streets will be blocked off, and we will have fun activities, water slides and things of that sort. We're just asking that you come out, just spend some time with the kids, just spend some time in the community and see what goes on, because sometimes when you're not in the community, you really don't know what's going on. If you're inside, you don't know what's going on outside. So, come in, meet some of the people in the community, and find out what's the need for the community. I thank you.
What time is that?
It's, oh, I'm sorry, it's from twelve to five Saturday. And as Mr. Robinson, and you were speaking about the dirt bikes, they are becoming a problem, and yes, you are right. They have become a big problem again. They're fluctuating in certain parts of town now, and I've noticed that. They're not so much around here like they used to be, but they are, but they are a big problem for us, and we need to do something. And I watched a movie, a documentary, when I was in Phoenix, and it had the Twelve O'Clock Boys. It was a Baltimore video of the bikers, and it was horrible. They just actually just take over the whole room. So, we do need to do something because this is just what these young men want to implement, Baltimore, and we have to stop them from implementing Baltimore because I know, they came to me one time before and asked me to help them do what Baltimore is doing. I said, "I definitely will not do that. Something happens to you, it's blood on my hands. I won't do it." So, I didn't do it. So, I thank you for coming forward with that, and if, you know, you have any other questions about that, you know, call one of the council people, the mayor or the administrator, and we'll help do something about it.
Thank you. Ma'am, I did not, I did not receive a phone call from you, but please reach out again. I do know that we have been talking about the situation. We have been, and I think we're trying to figure out some things, so it's not, believe me, we are working on it. But I don't believe I got a phone call, and if you emailed me, I didn't see an email either, but it could have went to the junk or the spam. Sometimes the emails drop into my spam, so I'll go back and look at that. I don't want you to think that, you know, no one was responding to you. But the city is working on that, are working on the Tencent thing, a lot of discussing. They will be on the work sessions, and we'll be able to come with some solution-focused ideas. Again, if you are healthy enough and you're blessed enough to be healthy enough, please call the Delmarva Blood Bank. You can donate blood, plasma. You could also sign up as an organ donor. These things save lives. They may end up saving your life at some juncture. Our region is critically low, and it would be great if everyone who is healthy, please donate blood. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to touch base on some of the stuff we did here in the community this weekend. So, I was able to actually be in April's district at Billie Jean Jackson Park. We had a lovely community field day, and I just wanted to say this weekend was just a reminder to me that this is the year of community for Salisbury, despite the heat advisory. All the events that I was at, fully stocked, everyone was out having a grand time, and to me, that's just a positive spin on what's going to be coming for Salisbury. We have a community that's really starting to get more active, and we strongly encourage you guys to continue coming out to city council meetings, speaking up, providing your feedback and support. So, I just wanted to raise something that's going on in my district, well, the city's actually doing, so it's the last week for this backpack drive that the city of Salisbury is doing with Wycomico Partnership. If anyone has backpacks, glue, any type of school supplies that students might need, they're accepting those items at the Newton Community Center from ten A M. to five P M. through August fifth. So, if you have anything to give, I strongly encourage you all to swing by and drop anything off. Be immensely helpful.
The only thing I want to say, I missed some events this, the past two weekends, on Saturdays that I happened to be off, were funerals. But I do want to note, the funeral I attended this weekend down on Tillman Island was someone that I'd known all my life, made a huge impact on my life and my family. His name was Bunky Miller. He was a lifelong waterman, and he was also an individual who built many of the working, the workboats on Chesapeake Bay. Phenomenal individual, and he was ninety-two years old, and so he was a great man.
He lived in.
With that, we are adjourned. Everybody have a great week, and Ms. Gibson, make sure you stay out of the heat, sunscreen, and hydrate.
No, you could have told, I'll tell Brandon.